Hey, what's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we are going to get through a hand history of our friend Red-Eye Jedi. Who took, I think he took third or, or, or fourth place in the, um, what is it? The fifteen dollar KO on GG? What was, what was the name of that tournament?
They called it the Grand Slam.
The Grand Slam. It was a big one, right? So he took four thousand three hundred out of the fifteen dollar game. So pretty nice. Let's see how he does it.
Is it PKO or?
It is PKO, Joey.
Okay.
So right off the bat, under the gun opens and then we go with the three bet here. With a pretty hefty three bet, a little bit more than three X.
Isn't this just a call?
I, I would just call here. I'm not too much into three betting because like facing a four bet, you're in trouble. And then it's just like strong enough. I'd much rather three bet like a weaker hand here, maybe.
King queen.
It's probably okay at seventy, but yeah, I mean, what you're saying is true.
Let's see what the machine says just real quick.
I think this is one where ace jack and ace ten suited call and you might get some bluffs from ace nine suited.
Yeah, ace ten off maybe, king queen off.
Alright, so no, it's a major victory race.
Oh wow.
Ah, say, say it was good.
Okay. So he finds it.
This dude docks.
Okay, 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 okay.
I fold.
That pisses Ken off and it's not even his hand.
I fold. I mean, we gotta do.
Stuff, I'm trying to figure it out. You got a kind of a nice hand. You really fold here.
Yup.
Okay, let's see. Let's see the machine. On the flop, it says to fold most of the time. And calling is a thing, but it, it's kind of losing some two thousand big blind per hundred.
Files.
Okay, so do not call. Okay, but what do you defend with? Would you defend a ace, king, a spade?
Yeah, two evers to the queen, you probably gotta call, right? Got gutters, you got, you know, it's just dicey like. How often are they leaving actually? Like this doesn't seem like a board they get to lead on a time.
Look at this, never. Basically, yeah, the solution from here is gonna be.
Not gonna be able to solve it. He calls.
Okay.
Mystic.
Yeah, but that card was good. Oh wow.
Half spot already.
That's a fold.
That's an easy fold. I fold it. I should not fold.
Uh, you got re-buy equity though.
That's my issue, right?
What are you drawing? So a king?
Yeah. A king. Sometimes, you know.
Nine. Ace, king, nine.
Eight?
This guy's got a queen.
Or I mean eight.
He's gonna show you like king, queen here a lot.
His hand could be good, maybe, seven, eight.
Yeah, that's the other part of it, right? He could be bluffing. We don't block his bluffs.
Dude ain't bluffing. Dunk three bet pot over bets turn, just the nuts.
Low blood. Why would he overbet that much though? You know, it's kind of feels a lot like a.
This is like a silly fun.
Yeah, I mean with the bounty equity, I wouldn't mind just calling it off, but.
It's the nuts versus our hand. Like if I have ace queen, I'm just like, whatever.
We only need like a little bit.
Well, we should be following flop, so we shouldn't be here. So let's see. He calls it on.
Oh my god.
I like it.
Well, it's a ten, yes, Ken. It's a small buy-in, fifteen dollars. And then this guy could be out of line because he could have a note here.
We're gonna find out.
No, he covers, so that's good.
Or we could just hit the ace.
Yeah, it was like Galen said, king, oh, tens. He had way out of line.
That's dumb.
Like he's bluffing, shitty bluff, but like I said, he's still like, he's still beating us, right? Like.
Yeah, half spot, right? That, we make a call and we've got pot. What is going on here?
Get a bounty.
Okay, so bet the pot here.
Might be a little big. I mean, a large bet might be in order, but this might be a bit big.
I don't know. Seems out of line to me. What about you guys?
I think maybe. I think two thirds might be okay.
I mean, with the six, the six of the five, like, uh, before we don't have that many big bets.
Yeah, some more of a bet. You can go like sixty five.
Yeah, like the biggest you wanna go is like two thirds, I think. With the six and the five, you don't really have those. Yes, like with two pairs.
Okay, that's gonna be a big squeeze for how much? For twelve?
Uh, pretty deep. So it was like ten, ten, I'd probably go eleven.
A bit small, cause I would size up a little bit here. I would go like ten, twelve.
Hmm, you want to get big ten, right?
Nine, two, four rainbow is definitely a good size up board here, like your jacks, your queens, your tens, all that kinda stuff. Wanna go big.
Yeah.
I think it's a small C bet, but if you wanna get stacks in, we gotta go bigger, right? But it's so dry, three bet pot, I think we're range just wants to pretty much go small.
If you don't size up here, Ken, why do you size up?
Well, it's not connected enough for me to wanna size up.
I think if I size up, if I have like ace, nine, uh, tens, jacks, queens, I think I start to like, maybe not bet so big.
Yeah, I agree. It's not, it's not really a board. It's not connected at all, so.
Well, it is polarizing. It's only using the big bets.
Nice. And once again, that's cause we're so deep, right? Once you get stacks in.
Yeah.
So half pots is polarizing size.
Yeah, but we're three-way, aren't we?
No.
Yeah, no.
Oh, okay. Nevermind then.
Oh, I thought it was three-way as well.
It was multi-way guys.
Okay, one. I like the one. That's good. Okay, now we cover. So I think we can call here.
Like three betting here.
Yeah, I don't like this click.
It's not a good stack depth to be three betting this kinda hand. You wanna three bet.
You have to call.
No, 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 no. Hear me out, Louis. It's a PKO. You wanna isolate the guy with fifteen big blinds and just run your eighteen big blinds with nineteen suited versus for the bounty.
Yeah, but you wanna iso him a click bet?
Yeah, I'm just gonna click it. I mean, what else are you gonna do? You can't jam.
Wow, you can go to like five and a half or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You don't have to go big.
He went three.
Yeah, you're just uncapping your range, so the guy with a hundred and thirty behind doesn't do that for you, you know?
Good enough, huh?
I think we have to call more than three bet here, because if we three bet all these weekends to isolate, most of the time it's gonna fold. The other times, we just gotta be too weak when we call and these two stackers gonna squeeze us.
Well, yeah. Most you should do is throw this in a program like HRC, so you can actually see if it's a three-way or if it's a three-bet. If you're really curious.
Hmm, yeah, but. Yeah, I'm also with the call on it. Uh, a bet one here. It's not a board where you wanna bet one. I think that's. That's like.
Yeah, typically this is a board you wanna go bigger, but how does that change when the, your opponent's only sitting with thirteen big blinds?
Still gotta go a little bigger. You gotta go at least a third, right? Like.
Or twenty five.
Something like that.
Yeah, I could see two.
Uh, I would, I would check.
Okay, checking or betting small?
Uh, check. Give him a chance to bluff or hit his hand, cause we got the board locked the hell up, right? Like.
Jack dews. Okay, it's a little wide, but it's okay, right?
Nice open, yeah, it covers.
Checked. We don't have the club. We have a pretty strong hand, kind of a D. Anyone is sizing up to half spot here, cause that's what I would do.
I missed the size up here. I would have bet small.
I probably would went like four.
This is half spot actually, right?
I think half spot is perfect, yeah.
Yeah, I think so as well.
He's a hair under half pot. He's like forty percent, forty-five percent like that.
Five, fifty-five would be nice.
See, he wants to go in E percent pot.
Yeah, I would have been like over.
Yeah, miss it.
It's a big bet board.
Over pot, too.
Yeah, big bet.
Probably is a big bet.
Well, the side ace then, it's highly coordinated and then there's the flush draw, so it's easy for whatever he has to continue. Queen, jack, king, queen.
Was that a hundred effective or was that sixty effective?
This is sixty.
Yeah, no, no, no. I know what the situation is, but the sim you were looking at.
Sixty.
Okay. I didn't.
I copy, I just copy pasted the hand and we.
Ah, okay.
Oh yeah, big bet here is good. The ten pairs, that's probably out of range, right? What do we do with ten pairs?
Well, we're gonna bet a lot of our ten X two, so we could probably still barrel.
He wants to blast again.
Yeah. Because once he doesn't dunk, then he just blasts case king, right?
That's right. Do you think he should be dunking a little bit here?
A lot, a lot maybe.
Yeah, I think he should be leading. That's the ten pairs.
I think, but at least. Let's see, like.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a classic. Second card pairs.
Whoa, wait, what? We don't beat it all. That's crazy.
The thing is, we have, he has plenty of ten X two, that's why I said, like, that's why we get to barrel, cause we have plenty of ten X in our range as well. We got like ten, we got king ten off, right? Like, we got off some portion of the time, I think. So we got some decent amount of tens still.
So river, are we supposed to triple it off here with the ten pairing? I think so.
Nah.
Yeah, we're betting. Kind of value here, right?
Half pot-ish.
Oh, where is?
Can't go huge, but you could definitely get value.
That has to be the safest river, right? So.
Yeah, definitely wanna triple barrel here, plenty of big pots.
What's it pot? Almost pot?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have, we both have like the equal amount of nuts, so we can't go over pot. Um.
Well, we went twenty-one. Exactly, okay.
Yeah.
What a play. Good, good value that thing. Uh, ten, call. We get this board.
Wow.
I wouldn't check very much here.
Uh, do you have a check raise? That hits pretty good. We gotta go, we can't go huge. There's completed equity. So we gotta go smaller, check raise maybe.
I thought like medium or check raise, yeah, like not too small.
So you guys telling me it's not a big bet?
Well, I know the ten, the heuristic is when you have the direct overbear, you're gonna bet, like, we're gonna bet infrequently here, probably, right? But, and big with the ten a lot, but there is completed equity. I think that works in.
What are you wanting to bet here?
We blocked the completed equity, no?
Yeah, but what are you, what are you wanting to bet here?
Uh, I would bet, I don't know, like half pot?
I think half pots, I think half pots perfectly reasonable.
Half pots, right, right? Very, uh, doesn't make a lot of sense on such a coordinated board, which is like so wet that like you don't actually go so big, I think. It's like one of those, one of those things where you go like slightly more than half pot, I think. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, this is one of those spots that has competing factors, you know?
Yeah, 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 precisely.
You bet small with ace nine, huh?
Uh, I would go bigger ace nine, but tens, you have everything locked up. You have like the straight locked up. You have like the, you know, the clubs locked up.
You're chucking ace nine a lot. No, that's betting a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Like either bet big or check, I think, depending on suits.
Uh, doesn't go above fifty percent pot.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, on check, check. Three rolls off on the turn.
This is a good bet. I think he could actually even maybe go bigger.
Over bet, there you go.
I think this is perfect.
Very nice. Let's see what's over here.
Now, actually. Oh wait, no, we're out of position. Never mind.
Spot on.
It is a good over bet.
There you go.
Alright.
Who's, uh, who's hands are these? I feel like we're watching the child of the sim.
This is the red-eyed Jedi who took third or fourth in the Grand Slam on GG.
Wait, I don't, I don't think I know them. Are they active in the discord?
Barely know.
The red-eyed Jedi?
Uh, he comes around a little bit in the voice chat.
Okay, I'll have to keep my eyes open. I just feel like we've seen some pretty good plays so far, so it's nice to see.
Yeah, he's streaming the final table.
His name on GG is Black the Ripper.
This is kinda close. It's like if they're really fishy, if they're really fishy, I want, I could get after it.
I just, hmm. I don't like the call.
Feels like we're losing a chip too much.
I stick on the button to find if call.
Joey, why don't you like the call?
I, I, I would rather ISO than call.
The problem is their limp range is so much stronger than ten-nine off.
I don't know. I'm not a big fan of the calls here.
I, I ISO very, very, very wide from late position and then just C bet and it works a lot.
Yeah.
I'm with you here. I like the idea of limping back with a wide range. I don't know if I'm expanding this one. You think it's a good idea?
On the button, I think it is.
Okay, maybe it is. Interesting.
I don't like the ISO with this hand because I, I've been.
You have a.
If it was suited, I would.
You have like a hundred and twenty big blind. You're just covering the table like this. You need to be.
PKO, please PKO. Maybe.
One reason why I like ISO in hands that week, I learned my lesson is they, cause they limp call, they have their range is just so much stronger than ten-nine off their limp call range. So it could change trouble.
But they don't know that I have ten-nine off.
Hey, am I wrong for wanting to squeeze a little bit here?
Probably not. Probably not, Louis.
Oh, seems good. When you, when you cover both, probably not.
It might do it, but.
Twenty-seven picks. So you have to call it, Jan.
Squeezes more than it.
Yeah, of course.
Than it.
We're not squeezing the fold.
And, uh, and Louis, of course, that's a, in, like an MTT chippy P solve and this is a bounty where we cover both.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, even more, right?
Yeah, I think calling's okay, but.
Here we go. We're in trouble now. It would be easier to play, no?
Yeah. I just wanna get out of the way. I don't.
I don't know.
Someone has a.
I don't know about this.
I think this is.
He's gonna call one. Bounty's.
This is a, this is a mess by the way.
This is, this is a bounty.
Is this a fold?
That's a bounty.
It's like, what two cards? I don't know.
And I'm probably folding a lot during game.
I'm calling one.
I'll just call.
Calling one, what do you do when he back jams?
Fold.
Uh.
Forty back jams.
This guy back jams and the first guy folds, I, I call it off and I just.
Louis, are you, are you really paying for these PKOs to fold top pair?
Here, it feels like here, people don't raise enough. So when this guy raises, like he's never balanced, so my hand is just in the, the potatoes here.
Oh, but he's got more queens that he might do this with.
Unless I have a mark here, unless I have a mark here, I don't know. I lean to where it's getting out of the way.
The C bet is probably over C betting and this guy probably just has a queen and doesn't want you in the hand anymore, calling behind.
That's the reason I have it fold.
I'm with Louis. When, when he C bets and then he gets raised, one pair is very. I mean, you still got two streets of betting to handle.
It's so dry. Are you raising a set here? Or are you gonna call and try to keep the button in?
If I have a set and position here, I'm always just calling.
Yeah, I'm just calling.
So he's got ace queen that beats us and we beat all the other queens.
Yeah, there's no queen four, there's no queen deuce. Uh, deuce is a four deuce, but like that's it.
You guys like to continue here?
Yeah, there's no way I'm folding.
In a PK, I can't clear one and then if I face more aggression, there you go.
Yalan, you like calling one here?
PKO, I'm calling. Uh, it's just a freeze out unfolding.
And then what do you do when you're running this?
There we go.
Exactly. Now we gotta suck out equity and hit our king.
It doesn't matter. You have to call.
Nice. There you go. Easy. Ah, man. Oh, queen jack will be.
Even if that guy shows you ace queen there, you have to call because.
Yeah.
The bounty's on the table. It's just not that much. You almost have pot on.
So much money in the pot already.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Never folding.
Hi, good to see us ISOing with the suited one here.
Now this one I would just call, cause you're still in middle.
Before you, uh, before you move on, like that guy in the three bed, you should definitely take note that like you called, they back jam, giving him a price to basically call everything and he folded. So that dude is way out of line.
Yeah, now he's limping.
Yeah, he seems like he's button clicking, right?
Yeah, he is.
And he docks.
Oh, dunk's huge.
Yeah. With that one, I would have just called behind instead of ISO. You're in middle position and you have a good calling.
I think it's the opposite. I think you gain a lot in middle position from pushing out, cut off a button. Um, I'm happier with limping on the button.
Yeah, I'm with you, Tim. I like the suited ten, plays better post flop as well.
This one seems a little bit marginal, no?
This one does.
Yeah, you need, you need to know that button is like three betting like fifteen plus percent of hands, which I doubt they are.
I mean, yeah, it's seventy big blinds effective. It does seem.
Yeah.
I don't hate it. If you were gonna use this, but you just can't. If you were gonna use this as a four bet bluff, you need to go to like fifteen, fourteen and then fold to the jam from the button.
I don't, I don't.
I would just call the three bet one hundred percent of the time.
Just call, let's call.
It's a PKO, we just call.
I see some merit in like four betting here.
Ace king's a slam dunk. This is probably maybe just a tiny bit out of line, but I don't hate it.
I agree. Jamming ace king is totally different and is great.
It's just fear folding now.
This call.
Look at the huge EV difference. That small raise is reasonable. So like if you think somebody's a little overactive, like sure, go for it.
So you like to cold call here, Jeremy?
Yeah, just call, just call. It's a PKO, we cover. You know, like you can play the flop. I don't care if it's out of position with ace queen. You know, it's against a bunch of shorties. Uh, if you just call, uh, somebody could scream.
You're not shorties. You have seventy big blinds.
Yeah, a hundred. You have a hundred.
Seventy is not short though.
No, I'm not seeing the seventy big blind guys, a short, shorty. It's a thirty big blind, you know, in the thirty big blind stack. That's a, you know, I mean forty big blind.
What we've seen from solves is we're not gonna cold call three bets. We're not gonna cold call three bets from the small blind. You can cold call a little bit in position like button. You can cold call three bets sometimes. Um, if I cut off three bet and I was in button with this hand, I think cold calling is a little more reasonable.
Uh, real quick, we have, we have PKO ranges, don't we, in pre-flop academy?
Yeah, I think. I think in PKO.
GTO Wizard has PKO now.
Yeah, that's a fine one.
Let's, let's look at some PKO ranges and see.
I mean, out of position obviously is not gonna be great, but like, I think in general, like it likes to just cold called. Uh, if it's a tree bet and you, you cover both, like by a lot. Let's take a look. See, okay, let's do something like. Um, what was the positions anyway? Uh, let's see, raise. Tree bet.
You lose your PFA?
Yalan?
It's beginning of the month, maybe there's.
Yalan? Are you here, honey?
Does anyone else have PFA?
I don't.
Nope.
UTO Wizard has the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Yeah, no, no, no. We don't have it right now. Uh, but I have that, I have that spreadsheet. I've been working on that. Has all that stuff. What are you trying to, what are you trying to look at?
PKO ranges.
Any, any cold call range? I, I, I just don't think they have the solve though.
Yeah, I mean, just, you would have to look at this in a HRC really to get a feel for it, but, um, good. GTO Wizard has PKO ranges.
Alright, so what are we looking at? We're looking at thirty, seventy, hundred?
I think when you have both covered, you can get a little bit more.
Louis, click ICM. Then PKO. And then like seventy left, seventy percent left or something.
Yeah, it just started, so ninety percent, whatever.
And then I've got something like.
Average stacks around sixty.
EP opens thirty, button, big stack, three bets. Button big stack.
Thing is, I don't think they solve for a cold call. Uh, GTO Wizard.
Well.
Let me just.
They will have the third player in, but there won't be any calls from the small blind.
That's correct. Why would you wanna play a cap range out of position against all players? Like, we're done. Go home, everybody. Not a thing.
This is, um, this is just a four bit small spot, like, uh.
Thank you. Thank you, Galen. That's what I said from the start.
Yeah. What, what are we, uh, debating here? Thinking about folding?
It's just an open muck. Like you're just, it's not a jam.
Right.
It's not a protocol.
Oh, ace queens are pulled. Even in PKO.
Let's see.
So yeah, it's an exploit. If they're extra wide, this could fit enough four bet buffs sometimes. That's fine.
So it doesn't wanna, I mean, doesn't wanna call for a bet, so maybe if we add some extra calls, maybe it could be in there, but like, we don't know really. But, oh my goodness, the disaster happened. So this is what, this is why this is a disaster.
Racing versus nines.
Oh my god. No, we're racing against like queens.
What the hell is going on?
Follow in position.
Oh, that's jacks. Oh.
God, we're so lucky. It's so lucky.
Woo. Ace on the flop. Oh, it's coming. We blacked it. We're good. Alright.
Jesus. Dodged a bullet.
Equity warrior.
So that was not optimal. Not optimal at all. Right? Oh. Sorry, I muted Yalan, just.
Is alright.
Yeah, you got a lot of background noise.
Alright. Anyway, I found, uh, hey, Jersey said. Where it's like, uh, yeah, it's like a raise from EP and then a tree bet for hijack and then just a cold call from cutoff. And you find that you only wanna cold call in that spot in a, if you cover both. Yeah, but I think that's in position, so I have no idea about out of position, having raised any sims, but I think that's kinda like the theory behind it. Like you just wanna like call a lot, uh, even your aces, kings.
I think in position is a really key detail there.
Yeah, no, I think so. I, I kinda don't, I'm not sure if you're supposed to cold call from small blind, so.
The answer is no. I am sure that you're not supposed to.
Uh, alright, yeah, but, alright, cool. We can, we can continue. Sorry for the digression.
Don't worry about it. We like to hear new ideas, especially from great players like you, man.
Oh, eh, wow.
Three bet.
Yeah, you, there should be a three bet, right? I don't really, I mean, eh.
No.
Oh, it's not horrible.
Call's okay, but three bets better.
Probably makes it fifty-fifty, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think. So this guy's gonna have a really wide range, by the way. So it's like, there's a guy with two big blinds, so I mean, you can literally give this guy any two cards.
That's a good point, cause he opens hoping that the two big blind is gonna call behind him and maybe he gets one through and gets a run at.
Okay. Like I'm, I'm opening, honestly, if I'm that guy, I'm opening stuff like jack three off and stuff here.
Calling.
Yeah, I mean, does that have a, a spot with two big blinds though?
No. Even better than, right? It's a chippy V. This, this one, it's even better, huh? So three point forty-two, second barrel, we continue?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's, he's double barreling all of his, uh, single clubs and stuff. Alright, well, that's not good.
Need to earn it? No, you're just.
No, no, no.
Just show it down.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a pair, which is not great to turn to bluff, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause like you unblock his state ice clubs.
Go super small here, right?
I would go one. Is it not good?
Well, I mean, a little deeper, you might just go like the twenty percent.
I'm kinda with. I'm kinda with the Ken, like, I, I don't, I don't hate one, but I feel like one sometimes just clicks things in people's heads that makes them wanna check raise you.
Yeah.
Well, you don't, you don't really wanna do that when you have nine high.
I know, but it's like, you kinda wanna mess around, right?
I mean, don't have.
Then, not everybody that picks up the ball.
Plus is a two, some people like mistakenly think twos are like. Gin and they can, like, in the big blind, even though they don't have all the offsuit twos, a lot of people make the mistakes thinking they have them all and rate check raise you. Way too wide.
You do, what did you, oh?
Big dog, whoa, what is?
Whoa.
What's going on?
Whoa.
What is going on?
What the hell is going on here?
I like it, but. You know.
I do not, I do not like it.
I mean, I like the idea, I don't like the combo, but I like the idea of this, uh, going for a check raise, obviously.
I mean, I could give you, I could, there's a laundry list of like red flags here, it's four ways, the dude donks. Out of position on a board that doesn't have a ton of donking, he uses a large sizing, he's got you covered in a PKO. You, he, you used a really large raise size when you should probably be more clicky if you are gonna get out of line. You basically have zero equity to turn other than like perfect, perfect. And you're still covered behind, like the guy behind you still covers you, like, I just, there's a million better spots.
And let me say also, just like in theory, we just don't raise in position versus big bets all that much, like, if he has a polar range. Then like, how do we construct a polar range around a polar range? Like, it doesn't make sense in theory.
That's right, you just call.
Nine, nine blocks plus two.
Yeah, if you have a bluff catcher, then you, then you call versus polarized bets, he's supposed to have value and bluffs, and probably this is not a properly.
In the multi-weight pot, he doesn't have as many bluffs. As he would in a heads up pot.
Yeah, way less.
And we don't close the action, so we don't need to.
Oh yeah, and you're just like, you're super deep here, like, you should just be picking on different people, I think.
Oh, there, the.
And picking different combos, yeah, like ace five of diamonds or something, but like.
Yeah, okay, you know, that, like, it's not a spot for it, but I could, I could defend that combo more.
Yep. Yeah, you just don't have to, you don't have to win every pot, I think, this is losing a lot of chips to try.
There must be some notes here or something.
There is a theme, there is a theme developing, in post flop, he's very aggressive.
Alright.
Well, that's good, that's good.
The ace ten hand earlier, like, he's like, nah, you ain't having it, I'm gonna call you down and get there and.
Alright, so Mr. Jedi is not here, but it doesn't matter, because.
This is terrible.
He's gonna get it anyway.
I love it.
There you go, my friend, anytime. What is he gonna do?
He's gonna blast his way out, I bet.
Just pretend he has diamonds.
He's like, he's like, this is what this guy wants.
Oh my god, we need to go GO two if we're gonna go for this, we need about like thirty big blinds, twenty-five big blinds.
Oh, we checked.
And then it's like, are we supposed to pretend we ended up on the river with nine eight, which we balked, like, which we would never be raising.
Gotta go with.
You just put like pocket eights at absolute health, this guy was getting out of line with eight, thinking he's gonna dock and, like, who knows?
Yeah.
A week, a week ten, like.
I, I wouldn't be happy here with pocket jacks.
I'm wrecked, I would have broken my wrist with pocket jacks.
Me too, against this line.
The problem is, it's just like, it's such a weird spot, because he doesn't have pocket jacks, like, it's an open call call from the small blind. First, like, two wide ranges, so it's, what, what are you representing here, guy?
Set of fours.
Yeah, well, yeah, okay, okay, maybe.
A set of fours that checked after the flush draw on the turn?
Maybe, I mean, it was a big raise.
We got away with murder. Don't try this at home.
But counterpoint, like, we might have just been bluffing with the best hand the whole time.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, right? Uh, if you're gonna VPip, you could three bet this or call, I think, it's probably not crazy.
I think those are both fine.
When you're super deep. This is a really good flop.
And he's a blaster, so he can keep getting like betting, like, getting like tilting people with his big bets.
Yeah, 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 somebody's gonna pay him off, right, Ken? Uh, it's alright sizing, I don't mind that.
They got nothing.
Yeah, I probably would have played check though, to be honest, to check raise, but I mean, betting's good.
Well, there was an ace on the board, wasn't that? Yeah, somebody could have easily had a king, I probably would have.
For sure.
Yeah, I've got shot.
Uh, this is a pretty good squeeze spot.
This that?
Yeah, I would squeeze.
Yeah, for sure. Kind of called.
Yeah.
Uh, the question is though, it's like, are, are you supposed to just be jamming here?
Uh, no, I think it's a hair too much.
No way.
Yeah, a little too deep.
Alright, so, alright, so, well, well, before you go on that, you don't, do you think you have jams out of position sixty effective?
Yes.
And chippy V, I think ace king. And pocket queens or something like that might have some.
The church.
Well, I'm gonna be completely disrespectful here, because these guys are opening into a guy that's got twenty big blinds. So their ranges are just really wide.
There might be a little something.
I, I have to, I have to admit, I'm not sure if. Jamming becomes a little bit more of a thing, because it's a PKO versus a, a standard. Tournament.
Just look at a chippy V range, I would be, I'd be surprised, I would not be shocked.
It's pure all in, Galen.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
He wants to put sixty in the midi.
There's already a lot in the pot, so, you know, just take, take the profit.
Oh, what is it? Hijack raise, button, kind of.
Yeah, hijack button.
Oh.
I would not be shocked to see it just pile.
Yeah. I'll be shocked if it doesn't.
Louis, since there are sixty-five, just check. Oh, you can't do. Yeah, you can't do seventy.
Yeah, pocket tens.
Eighty would be this.
Eighty would be pocket tens if it's button cutoff, I think.
Alright.
Now, okay, at eighty, if you put two callers in there, you'll start jamming at eighty, but you don't do it.
No, no, this is eighty.
You only have one caller, Louis.
Because it's hijack, hijack at button, I think if it's. Okay, wait, eighty, I think, button, button small blind, you get a jam at eighty.
There, that's what I'm trying to tell you guys. Yeah, 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 but. But yeah, so like, the fact that it's a PKO and you cover, and there's a short small blind, is making this jam even better. Or raise. This is fine too, I think, I, it went really small, but I think it's still, still good.
Well, now that we're here, just a C bet?
Yeah, I would go eleven or something like that.
A Jedi goes for a check.
Um, I don't think I like a check. But it's, I don't know, it is kinda set city on the flop there.
Yep, the miracle.
Yeah, the size up, right? That's too small, I think.
Off pot?
Oh, man.
Maybe bigger.
Yeah, maybe bigger, Ken, like, when he goes check, check on the flop, you should be pretty polar. On the turn.
It typically, like, if the jack was a blank, we would get to overbet if we're betting the turn, turn. But since the jack did change the value of top pair or overpairs. Then we do size down, but not below half pot.
Dude, I'm not sizing, if I have diamonds here, I'm betting big, if I have straight draws, I'm betting big, if I have sets, I type my first jack.
Sixty, sixty-six to seventy-five percent, I think it's like the sweet spot.
Yep. No, five is too small, I think, because, think about it, he has wingjack suited, he has tenjack suited, he has, you know, some jack nine suited, like, the cooler.
Yeah, he's got diamonds that can never fold and like even.
Like, what does five do, you know?
I don't think we have any small bets, put it that way.
Yeah, just go like twelve bigger.
We kind of wanna size to get it in.
Yeah.
Like nine, ten suited, jack ten, all, and I, and you're doing all of those hands a big favor by giving them a really sweet price. Yeah, so he just, I mean, he could have had diamonds there and you lost like, uh, a lot of EV on the turn.
Yeah, I mean, he hit the gin card on the turn, so I'm surprised he's so cautious. So nothing much to be scared of, the guy checked back the turn.
Um, yeah, this is good, actually, I like this bet a lot.
Is this an overbet spot?
Yeah, you got a, I mean, the two-tone nature might drive it down a little bit, but this is a good, this is a good big bet, I think.
I didn't think we had many overbets versus small blind.
Why not?
I honestly don't know.
No, we don't, we don't have. Many of those, because they have all the sets, they have, uh. Lots of.
It would be more like sixty-five percent.
Yeah. Small blind's always gonna be like half, half pot to like, maybe, you know, three quarters, I guess. But.
Yeah, I, I like having, I like having a smaller bet here when you have the heart in your hand, because you have more opportunities to barrel and polarize the turn.
Yeah, they have deuces, they have sixes, we don't have, we may not have deuces, I'm not sure about the position, but yeah, we've got, gotta, gotta respect that. But not advantage a little bit. But against big blind, yeah, for sure.
These guys love to dock.
But it's good, cause he's short, so we're.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that's an easy, do we just call or raise it?
Yeah, we just call.
Just call, just call, yeah.
Hey, why not click? Why not click?
Cause we're, it's one of our worst kings, right? Like, it's disaster if we.
Are you ever folding with a bounty on the line here?
I mean, if I call and that was, say, one of the other stacks, like, if I raise and they, they three bet, like, man.
Not, not against the button, but what about against a small blind, if small blind wants to get it in?
Yeah, 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 that's fair, Joey, that's why I like a click, like, I could see clicking here, calling the button, and, uh. Folding to that guy.
Yeah, I would click better kings, not this one.
Yeah, not this one, because if we click, then small blind just plays perfectly against us.
Nets.
It just goes if we have a hand, if he had, he beats skin it, and he folds if he doesn't. Alright, so, like, I think calling allows him to make mistakes.
I mean, he has to overcall an eighty percent pot that, like, it's not a small bet, so.
Yeah.
I think it's okay to call there.
Oh, how wide?
We got him covered, this is good, fuck it.
Well.
It's better than saying a flop and folding, you might as well just run your equity, he's got a bounty on him, right?
I would probably call here, but I, I mean, I'm definitely VPipping, I don't know about jamming.
I don't know about jamming either.
It's a, it's less, it's like eight percent of our stack for the bounty.
Yeah, you know, it's kinda, it's kinda whatever, but I, I think I would still play call. I mean, what, okay, so Ken, what, how do you draw the line? How do you draw the line? Are you just jamming your whole range there?
Well, if it's a, if it's a hand I would wanna call, I'm just gonna jam it, if it's a hand in my folding range versus an open, um.
You don't have a calling range there, is what you're saying.
Probably not, not once it's heads up.
And he's, that's probably not optimal.
Ken, and he thought, like, he min raised off eleven big blinds. Doesn't that?
Nah, I don't care, like, that's why I said, like, I, if you just see a flop, you're gonna fold, but like, we could have hit a queen there, we had, you know, we had, what, thirty-five percent equity? And there's a bounty on the, on the line.
What's his range that he's not shoving versus his shoving range?
I don't know. I mean, he's got open zero from late position, off a twelve.
I mean, if he's a good balanced player, well, if he's a good balanced player, Joey, he should have a lot of worse hands than just the top of his range. Like.
Cause I, I'm thinking like the middle of his range, like the pocket nines, ace, jack. King, queens, stuff like that, I prob, is probably shoving.
What do you know, like, hey, queen eight suited.
But we lose the pot and still cover the entire table as well, which is nice. I don't hate running my equity, I mean, it sucks, queen two's bad, like, the two is awful, but the queen's still gonna be live a lot, right, so. Maybe.
It's a deuce.
That's a good call.
I would raise here, no? Or maybe SPR?
Uh, I would be tempted, just because he's got so many aces and kings, but. If he's gonna, if he's gonna triple it off with, uh.
This is the one.
He did, he did it. He there to check all the way.
Louis, how much do you hate it?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, well, how do you check raise on an ace?
Sleep at night, how can he look at himself in the mirror? Okay, it's pocket six, right, so.
He wasn't good, he wasn't getting it anyway.
Pretty punty from pocket sixes.
Yeah, he got back value.
Okay, okay, okay.
I don't think it turns to check raise, honestly.
Okay, weird.
Favor us.
Weird sizing.
I like this, I think it's good.
Now, do you still like it?
I wish somebody would have, uh, just.
Yeah, man, we're seeing a flop where we cover all, everyone, we have, like, like the fifth best hand in poker, life is good.
Check, check, uh.
You gotta bet.
Quarter.
Yeah, this is good. All in.
All in, easy.
Oh, what a joker. Um, I would VPip here.
Hmm.
Ooh.
The elite.
You gotta, you gotta call, five's good, a heart's good, probably.
Yeah, you basically have your direct odds.
You lead turn with a gutter and a heart draw, though, like.
Yeah, 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 that's what I was thinking, Ken, like, I was thinking, like, leading the turn is probably better than playing check call.
I would have, I would have put, I would have. Like a bet out there.
Uh, you call this.
Paper cuts.
Uh.
You have a jab here?
No.
I don't like jamming at all, I like, maybe like, I don't know, man, like, when you get deep in tournaments, I think it turns these into bluffs with these small three bets sometimes, but. I would just call here, I think.
Yeah, versus hijack, I'm not bluffing this.
No, off suit ace on the big line?
Versus hijack at twenty, I don't think we, I don't think we bluff this.
Yeah, I'm kinda with Ken.
You're like eight, ace, seven, eight, nine, maybe?
You check three streets here. Cause I think after I go check, check, I'm betting my three.
Hmm, it might be good.
I'm probably just trying to show it down, to be honest.
The two pair here on the river?
No, 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 not two pair, I'm just talking on the turn.
The turn, yeah, but the river, how do you approach this river?
If it's gone, check, 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 I'm playing check.
Yeah, he, he's supposed to bluff a lot of ace rivers, I imagine, right? Like, especially when we check all the way down, he probably should be betting pretty big a lot.
It's good for his value that he's checking down, and it's good for his bluff range, so you should get a bet, like you said.
And then we get the raise, cause he doesn't have ace nine, ace eight.
Exactly, you put in his face and just, uh, he either folds his airballs, or he's in the box with an ace.
Eye lamp. I'd bet bigger. Two or three.
Again, we do this little weird thing.
Yeah, he likes these clicky three bets, I don't get it. I fold.
I like the size up here, but I would bowl like.
Put this in a machine, I would actually raise the flop.
What do you mean, raise the flop?
He talked into us, right?
No.
Oh, okay, never mind.
We don't have this big. We're above the five. We have on a bet here or chips?
See bets on, for sure. It doesn't hit the, um, small blind very well, so I'm gonna bet a lot, actually.
So mixing fifty fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sucks, right? If when you bet, you face a raise, ouch.
Well, what happened to our chips?
We lost all the hands. Have you not seen?
We went from fifty to, we went from sixty to the next hand's thirty something.
Yeah, forty. Lines go up, we just don't play. Uh, I don't think this is a good check.
I would check.
You check here, Ken?
Yeah, I mean, he's got, he's all over this board in a small blind. I'm just checking it up, honestly.
And not range betting?
No. We got a lot of junk in our range.
Ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, our range is so wide here compared to theirs and this board just smashes their range.
Okay. He checks the turn. Check, check.
Wow, shut down, nice. Let's go.
Call. You four bet jam here?
Yeah, I'm running my equity. Fuck it.
I am not. I would just call.
PKO.
I like them both.
Never all in, just call. I'm calling here. We're hunting for booties and then we miss everything.
We're not getting lucky anymore. Limp pot, Jesus. Lines takes it.
Hey, we defend, flop an eight, we bet one. Okay, I like that. Two big blind, is this an all in?
Uh, uh, we don't cover the big blind, but I think we have to jam, yeah.
I'm pretty sure fours and threes jam. I'm not sure fives and sixes get in there right now.
Nah.
All the cookies.
I'm not that selective.
All the cookies every time.
Oh, almost every pair.
That's small, one big line.
Very small, yeah. And he can check raise paired fives a lot.
I don't like a check at all.
No, uh, we're gonna check, he's gonna check raise and we're gonna just call and get there.
No check, no check. Jerking, making.
Pair board, just one.
Yeah. Uh, so passive.
There's that guy not barrel the turn.
Hmm, how do we play this one? I would just fold.
Uh, I'm calling.
Nah, I'm not voting.
Calling this. Whoa.
I think you can even raise this a bit.
I wouldn't raise, maybe raise me a dead bet, but like, I, we're only covered by one person, like, uh, we have ten jacks suited, probably just call, right?
Yeah, pure ball.
Yeah, so strong. We recover him by quite a bit.
Oh, yeah, no, you don't want to raise suited tens against, um, an early.
DG, yeah. Pure call.
Yeah. I'm a little dark here.
Not, not that much tree betting, not that much tree betting.
But I've been hurt, been hurt with these two here.
Yeah, you need more blockers. The king, it's by using a king and a side blockers.
Not raising much, right? No raising.
I mean, raising is not great because we make him fold stuff.
Now you're, now you just gotta let, I mean, now what?
Yeah, look at this, like, now we gotta call it off.
This is, this is not what we were looking for.
That sucks.
Yeah, no, it's not. Like, we have to call it off, but like.
Oh, it also depend, we, we don't know how big his bounty was.
Yeah, but even the, if his bounty was huge, I, I definitely want to call. You know, see the flop, intermission, decide. Like, if his bounty is huge, he jams, we have no choice, we just call it off, uh, really marginal.
Not sure about calling it off here.
Them either. We're behind, we're behind everything.
Chippy V, it's an easy fold.
Cause this is our range, right? Say we bluff a little bit from here, from here or whatever. It's gonna be the bottom of the range, right? So we don't need to call off with all the range.
Yeah, but it's a PK though. It's a PK.
Alright.
We were literally ahead of nothing.
Anything more than like a min bounty, you have to call it off. You cannot just raise and fold to, what is it?
What?
Nineteen? Because like, like then why did we raise in the first place?
Yeah.
Well, that's why we don't raise, right?
Yeah, precisely, so.
I don't think it's a, it's too many big blinds. It's twenty-five bigs.
We don't know the bounty, we don't know the bounty, so like, if it's like, assuming it's a big bounty or like a decently sized bounty, I, I pretty sure.
I can actually, if you give me the hand history, is this P two four?
This is, uh, this is why you don't three bet this hand.
Yeah, we got that. I, I can find out what the bounties are in P two four.
But like, you can argue any cards, you could be like, well, I have seven three suited, but he has a big bounty. I'm, I'm gonna gamble.
Yeah.
Exactly. You cannot do that.
With this hand, like you can't call off. It's, it's just not good enough.
Um. Calling it off, but like.
You actually might call it off.
I'm guessing ten jacks suited probably has like thirty-seven percent equity against the range.
Hmm.
Can you guys hear me right now?
Yeah. I don't think you hear us, though, if you're talking to everyone.
I, I, I just switched over to, I got a Bluetooth headset. It was too loud in the car, so I don't know if you guys can hear it better now. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's the reason why we don't really want to tree bet like ace X suited as much in, uh, PKOs because like it's too good. We don't want to like have to, uh, like get jammed on and we call it off, so we use more like a king X block, right? Cause if we get jammed on, uh, when we are bluffing, then, you know, it's, it's not as bad to fold like king for five suited or something. Like Jack ten suited, like just so much equity.
Yeah.
And you sent me the wrong hand, okay?
I send you all the hands.
Oh, shit. Okay, um.
Cause I'm, I'm, my personal thoughts, ten jack suited had, probably has like thirty-seven percent equity. Um. Against his shoving range. And if you, if you get to add like ten percent drop for the, um, bounty, it's probably a call. But if it's only like a two percent or three percent drop, then it's a fold.
I mean, if it's a min bounty, then like this guy needs to not tree bet it.
Yeah, yeah.
Even if, if it was a big now, it kept going.
Yeah, if it's a big, this, yeah, whichever situation, it's always just better to.
Alright, so we can rush it out to don't do this at home.
Uh, yeah, I agree.
This is a disaster. Are we gonna shove here?
I mean, I get his hand.
With a big bounty on your head?
No.
You should shove.
You should?
No.
I don't know.
Alright, so how about that? Okay, so tell me this. If you don't shove this, why would you not?
I would, I would have shoved ace eight off suit.
Yeah, 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 and I want to grab a Bugatti, but I don't have one. I have ten nine suited.
Because we're gonna, we're gonna get called by this one, two, three, four, five people that cover us, right? Uh, I'm assuming his bounty is pretty big by now.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I, I'm not sure his bounty's high because we didn't see him bust many people.
I don't know because I can't. A lot of chips.
So these spots right here, like when you don't have a lot of chips and you have a big bounty, the entire table is going to expand their opening range and their calling range to try to capture it. If he has a big bounty, you don't, you don't combat that by knitting up your range. You combat that by like running your equity against hands that are like six, seven suited. Or pocket threes or something, trying to capture your bounty.
Okay.
You, you wanna have a hand like king ten suited, uh, king ten off.
Yeah, I know. I want a Bugatti. I, I want, I want a Bugatti, I get it.
You want like pocket jacks too, but like.
I don't know why king ten suited, king ten off suit is, uh, compared to Bugattis, like, it's not a.
Alright, I might eat my words, but I am, I am with a high degree of confidence saying that this is just a jam.
No, I agree with you. What, what, what Galen is saying is that we have to play the cards we're dealt, right? Like, we can't just sit back and wait forever. We have seven big blinds. Once the blinds come back around, we're gonna be down to five, like, and we're gonna be like in jam any two on the button, you know, so.
Mm-hmm.
Within five or six hands, we're almost in jam any two territory. So does this hand fit into a good jamming range?
You're getting called by trash, you're getting called by five, four, you're getting called by like ten, eight.
If you get called by like ace five offsuit, you're happy here. You're happy running your equity.
Let's see.
I think.
Yeah, see, this is good, man. You're happy. This is fine.
Exactly. You're just not gonna get a better spot.
Yeah, nah. That's.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't even think we have to really argue it that much. That looked like simple.
Yeah, I'd call it simple too, but apparently not.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good jam. It's just that, like. Is.
Uh, this is probably, I would try to just call here. I don't know. This is, I could go either way here.
A lot of dead money here. He's opening worse and buttons not flating much better. Um, so I like jamming and hopefully taking it down pretty flop. There's a lot of money in there.
Hmm, I think jamming's fine.
Okay, it's close, right?
Yeah, I think it is. Honestly, I do think it's close. I think it's close, but you know, like, you can make an argument for jamming or calling, just don't fold.
Cause this guy here could be flating strong just because there's two short stacks, right?
Yeah, yeah, he could.
He's supposed to. The opener in a difficult spot because he has seven bags and, uh, if we jam, he's gonna be worried that the other guy is jamming over the top. So we'll bring him in a little, little bit difficult spot to jam there, I think.
See, this is gonna be kind of a weird spot, Louis. Like, you really do need to find a PKO range because you play the top of your range a little bit differently when, um, you cover people like this.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's not gonna be a call very much because at chippy V, it's not, so PKO, I think makes it.
Wait, chippy V's not, holy shit.
Yeah, oh, even more of a jam, I guess. Gotta go here, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, you're, you're not flopping an ace to not put your chips in.
Raise, nice.
I know we don't stop and go much in a multi-way pot, but when, on a hand like that, would that have been a good stop and go?
Like that.
What do you mean stop and go?
He's thinking just jamming on the flop or something.
Just call and dunk in the flop.
So.
No.
I, I think you're a little too deep, Joey, and they're gonna bet an ace high flop so much with air that you're just kinda shooting yourself in the foot versus their value range, right? So like, they're only calling you with better.
I thought we only had like, um, twelve left on that.
We had twelve big blinds. There was about seven or eight in the pot.
Yeah, 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 twelve's a lot, Joey, twelve's.
Okay.
When you jam, you're only getting called by like, I mean, there's some asex that call you, but you're pretty much only called by better and you don't let them bluff.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to say.
But like in the hand, cut off C bad, button called and then we jammed and they both folded. So we made an extra seven big blinds by not jamming.
Yeah, exactly. I think this is fine, by the way, this jam right here is.
Yeah, I like it.
I don't.
What do you want to do, Louis?
Uh, I don't know.
Fold, you wanna call?
I think I wanna call, yeah.
No, I don't like calling.
Uh, calling is gonna be kind of a tough spot.
It comes on the board.
Our hand, our hand is strong enough to jam. We're isolating the ten big blind stack.
If it's not a, if it's not a PKO, I lean towards calling more often, but.
I agree. I agree with that, Nick, why?
Yeah, or small tree then maybe, you know, that work.
Get there and get a bounty.
Beautiful.
Here's history, is this by the way?
Zeritai Jadi.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a Sunday fifteen dollar PKO, like ten thousand man field, he got third.
Ooh, one big blind bet on the flop, always.
I agree.
I like one here.
Yeah.
I like one. Duly. Uh, you could live or raise, yep, cause you cover.
Oh.
I think you do call probably.
Yep.
Lee, I don't know, this is close.
No, it's an easy call. This is well within the call range.
But we have to call.
Yeah, the opposite sevens are where they start folding like a chippy V V land.
Eight, seven off, probably the bottom.
We cover, so I think.
Yeah, we, like, we cover, like, like we should always want to continue.
Chippy V, almost all your offsuit connectors call. I think like two, three and four, three might fold.
I wouldn't even mind raising it pretty. Why was this line? If you cover.
Oh.
But, you know, that's a bit risky.
Yeah.
Oh. Ah, that's not so simple.
You guys have a rumble here, feels, uh.
It might, it might be a fault, but it, I don't, it's really.
Oh, we don't have him covered?
No, we do. Oh, no, he's kind of.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah. This is really close.
It is.
I don't know, I'm just folding here.
I'm folding here, probably.
There's so much dead money in there, but like say you open a button and a big blind jam for twenty-two big blinds, what are you doing?
Right? Yeah, I mean.
Those are right.
Uh, I, look, if, if you, if you ran this, I would not be shocked to see it tell you to call this. But I'm probably, I'm folding this in game probably. I don't know.
There's so much dead money in there. There's what, ten big blinds? Plus the bounty.
Pocket seven is an easy call, right?
Oh, very easy.
Pocket six.
I'm calling probably pocket five, sixes here.
Yeah, like, once it gets the threes and deuces.
It's close, right?
It gets weird, you know, because I don't hate the fold at all.
Well, five's beat deuces, threes, fours.
Yeah.
Which may or may not be jamming.
Yep, that's right.
What is this?
I think you're flipping a lot and it's really good if you're flipping there.
What is this thing?
Um.
Uh, I mean, that guy must, if that guy has a mount, monster bounty, I could understand this maybe to try to isolate it, but I, yeah, oh, I mean, we're grasping at straws here.
Yeah.
I don't like this.
I think this is a fold.
This is.
Like, unless he has a monster bounty, like Galen said.
No, if then, then you have to consider the small blind, the big blind, right? Then it's not, not to just sit there and let you uh, get, go after like a gigantic, gigantic bounty.
Yeah, what Duli said in the chat, what Duli said in the chat is why I don't like calling.
Yeah, I just fold.
Yeah, it, it's a fold.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Like, you're not gonna flop good enough with ace seven off to even take the bounty most of the time, you know? Like, he, he has a strong, pretty strong range. Like, of all the hands.
I don't, I think calling's okay here. Um, I think seven and a half might be enough at this table dub to dissuade some people calling, like.
What about shoving?
I think shoving's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm really, I'm just not folding this hand, so.
I don't mind.
They're both fine.
They're both good, for sure. We're only covered by one guy.
The only problem with shoving is you don't capture any equity from people getting out of line with worse.
No, hold.
This is, uh, not great, right?
No, 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 you gotta call, look at the button.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. You're alright.
Oh, now you fold, now you fold.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
Now you fold.
Tried, oh, okay. You know, he woke up with a hand. If he, if he doesn't, then we get a great chance.
This is a dream spot right here.
Almost a gallon.
You'd call.
I mean. Three, two to the left, right, so.
This is good.
Um, do you ever call, just call the raise?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Probably not out of position, right?
I, I, yeah, I prefer jamming. Like, I don't want him to get away, those flop.
But like, do you, do you, do you wanna have a calling range or are you only jamming?
Only jam.
Man, that's a good question, Nick. I don't know. Like, um, I'm not calling much here.
But aren't you getting, hold his worst hands pre-flop, though? When you shove?
No, no, he's, it, he's not folding it like any pair.
Yeah, I would venture to say he doesn't really have much of a folding range when he puts a third of his chips in and has a bounty on the table.
Okay.
Like, if he folds ace suited, then, well, great, you know, like, we just made him fold like thirty, thirty-something percent equity for nothing. So, yeah, definitely.
What is this?
That's your opposition.
We have to call ones.
Louis, what a spade.
Yeah.
So was this a, was this a donk or an EP open?
EP open?
Okay. I mean, I don't know, Louis. This is close.
Yeah, maybe it is a fold because we have so many straight draws and flush draws.
When we don't cover, I wouldn't waste time with this hand. Against this guy on king nine nine with no spade.
I'd say this is like towards the floor of your MDF and it's not gonna get easier to play.
It's just for the flop, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we just, we we have so many chips, we cover the table. We don't wanna like lose chips to this guy.
Yeah, I agree with Duli. We don't need to battle that dude.
Yeah.
I like this. This is good. You probably don't have to do this, but if you think that the blinds, the blinds are weak, it's good.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever.
Uh, too big. I like call. I think I like call. Actually, do I like three bet? Look at the blind, look at the big blind.
I like three bet.
Yeah, yeah, the big blind's so short.
I think even chippy V, this is a high frequency three bet.
I don't think his three bet, um, EP with a suited ten, no.
I think you do.
Not in PKO. When the big blind has thirteen.
Sixty bigs. Think like king jack, king queen appear calls, but king ten suited starts three betting.
I mean, it does, it probably does tree bet in theory to some, uh, some extent, but like this.
The challenge is also you have to look at the PKO dynamic here. Like, that guy, there's a really short big blind, so that guy should be expanding his range. Which means we expand our three betting range.
Exactly. This makes it more of a three bet.
Okay, I thought like nines would be better against the, um.
It is.
The range.
It is better.
Right, so like, you see this three betting range? It's like, it's definitely gonna be a good three bet, but you can call. It's just you're gonna get pushed off your equity sometimes. Like, if the big blind jams and then that guy jams, what do you do? You just lose. And then he shows like ace, eight suited or something silly.
This is a fold.
I would probably, I don't know, you have a gut shot. You have a gut shot, though.
What hands do you play that don't have a gut shot?
Well, fair.
Or a pair.
All right, any question on his sizing? Because if he's a GTO-ish type player, he should, he should be betting bigger, I think.
All right, I like that, uh. Like that phraseology you use, Joey, a GTOist.
Oh, it looks like we we got the scam easy and then we just bet every turn and get it. All right. Fancy. Ah, okay.
Is this solver calling that flop bet?
It's a really small bet.
I don't think so. You think, do you think it is?
I don't think so.
Probably indifferent or folding or something. But, I mean, three out to, three out to the nuts, uh, was it like one-third? Like, half-flop or anything bigger, it's probably just a fold, straightforward.
Machine mostly never folds.
Point zero eight, then.
Like Chuck?
Just a fly, uh, call here, never raising?
Yeah, easy call.
I think, yeah, I think calling's good.
Now.
Call, let him hang himself.
I, I still think I like call. Ooh, I played check, you played check and just let him put it in, I think.
Jam, yeah, we jam the river.
No, why do you jam?
No.
All right, all right, so I would say this. I would say this. If it's a. If you think the guy's playing poorly and it's a low stakes and he's kind of like fishy, jamming's better. But if you're playing against a better player, checking is a hundred percent superior here.
I agree with that. So if you're against me, you need to bet. Is that what you're saying?
Honestly, he blows a ton of stuff. He's bluffing ace X, he's bluffing ten X.
When you jam, what do you think calls you?
King X.
Okay. Okay, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, let me finish. So if you're getting called by king X, maybe aces. Do you think those hands are gonna check back? You think straights are gonna check back whenever you check?
I mean, like, uh, maybe, ten nine.
No, tho- those value hands are always just ripping it in, right?
Yeah, they should be.
Nine, king nine, after you call twice.
Yep.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm, I'm always jamming king nine on the button here, hundred percent of the time.
What are you getting called by?
All right, so like, I'll help out Nick for a sec. Like, just articulate what Nick's saying and what you're saying. You are, your, your fear is they're gonna check back a value portion of range that they would call. Okay, so like, let's say there is like one or two combos of king X that do check back. If it's a good player, you're gonna lose value from those, but you're gonna gain value from the fifty percent of hands that he's bluffing. A bad player's not gonna find the bluff, so bad player is gonna show down eight high or whatever they have, ten high. A good player is gonna find those bluffs and you're gonna capture value from those.
I think.
So that's why I was saying, like. Yeah, that's why I was saying, like, versus a good player, checking back, checking here is a hundred percent superior. Because he's, he's bet two streets and he gets a brick on the river. Whereas like, if it's a poor player and he's making a mistake and he's gonna be, he's gonna have like. I don't know, he's gonna try to bluff catch you with cha- a pair of jacks, jack ten or something, like.
Is that like, um, the thing is that, what bluffs does he have? What natural bluffs does he have that goes three streets on this?
So I'll tell you what I'm bluffing with.
Right?
I'm bluffing with like ten eight of spades, ten eight of clubs, ten eight of diamonds, pocket nines, pocket tens, pocket sixes, pocket fives, pocket fours. I'm, I'm jamming all that stuff.
Those are good bluffs, too.
I mean, those are good bluffs, but like.
I don't know about the pocket sixes, fives, fours, but.
Well, so like, can the, the under pairs are targeting jack X and queen X? Yes. And you're getting.
Jack X, what, what jack X calls the?
Holds from like those hands that beat you sometimes.
Don't have a, uh, because of the, the suits, right? You can only have like the king X of hearts. All right, there's no jackets, jackets of hearts. So like, if you have like a pair of flush draw kind of thing, it's gonna be trips on flush draw. Like, this is what do we have?
Uh, like, there's all jack ten, jack nine, jack ace are all a pair plus a straight draw. Those are never folding on the flop return.
Back, back to the pairs. Are we even double barring under pairs?
Yeah, like, why?
On the bu- on the button in position, yeah, I am.
I don't think.
You didn't get check raised, right, Ken? You didn't get check raised, so like, the king eights is kind of stripped a little bit.
Most, most of these spots, when you have under pairs, they try to check down, honestly. I see that.
Here's the thing, like, in order to call the turn, you wanna have like, yeah, you wanna have like a pair and a draw, right? Like, I think that's pretty, pretty reasonable. Like, at least a pair and a draw, like a draw to something decent, right?
Queen ten, queen nine, queen ace, jack ten, jack nine, jack ace are all pair plus, um, straight draws.
Uh, yeah, but like, but like. Yeah, but it's a flush draw ward, right? So like, generally, I mean, I'm just saying that like. Like, what would be considered like a nice, uh, like a gin river, right? Would be at least something like, okay, let's see if like. Uh, on this board, you kind of have it, but like, you're pairing, pairing like a gut shot and a flush draw or something.
Louis, on the turn, what is the button's betting strategy?
Like, it's king, king, jack, queen with a flush draw, right? Like.
Yes.
Even if you call, even if it goes like call, call, with, let's say, queen ten, for example, right? Queen ten, right, like.
Supposed to lead so much. What's the button's strategy?
Like, that's not a huge. You're not gonna, this is not, this is a very underbluff spot, is what I'm saying. So like, I think when he bets twice. This is, this is how I would purchase a spot. I think when he bets twice, you're gonna see that he has value quite a bunch of the time. Right? And I do not believe that all that value, especially just the king X, like king nine, king ten. Right? Maybe ace king definitely will find some value bets. Let's go and jam the river.
They should, they should be.
Getting two streets. You, you already.
They should absolutely.
Two streets with the top, with a top trips with no, uh, with not much of a kicker on a straight board. All right.
Okay, uh, Louis, say the button bets and cutoff calls like in game.
Yeah, but you could. Like, king jack.
That's fine, SPR is so shallow, you're just putting it all in. And call, and then on the river, are there any kings in position that doesn't bet?
I, I mean, I would. I would definitely.
I think he's jamming a hundred percent of kings.
Don't, right?
King eight is the outlier, cuz blocking bluffs.
Uh, king five, king six, some, some of the suited kings. I mean, obviously, like, the solver will.
So, thing is. I do, I do like the, the button was gonna jam every king, right? This is a little bit of the Matt Affleck thing, right? That's what you've been saying, Nick, is that the guy, like, he's gonna bet everything that is gonna call off here. But in reality, in my mind, my, my head, it really depends what type of player you are. Because for me, if I check here, people check back too much. Whereas if Galen check here by some magic, they're always all there.
I, Louis, I think, I think you just have a cognitive bias.
It could be, could be, but in my mind here, like, I understand Matt Affleck, you know, kind of says it, it makes sense. Always, like, it's gonna bet every king in its range, the machine is gonna do it, but is. I'm with the, I'm with Jeremy a little bit here. Is people, are, are they, because they're calling off every king in their range, are they betting in their? It may be, maybe they're not. It's tough, it's a tough spot.
So like, I, I think it's simple. If it's the daily big five, just donk jam. But if you're playing like, you know, the fifty stack, go for the check.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
You have, do you have buffs you don't jam or are you just only donk jamming guy?
There you go.
That's a good example. Do you think this guy's value betting?
Yes.
He should be, absolutely, a hundred percent. And if he's not, he's making a mistake.
Is he?
Ace ten?
Yes.
I've seen.
I've seen people take back here and then they never.
Neither check back, man.
Yeah, I mean, like, the circumstance, just because there's people out there doing that, doesn't, I mean. There's people out there who don't study the game, just cuz you see them in your game sometimes, doesn't mean that you're using that as a justification. To deviate from GTO, to justify the means, you know, to the end.
It's interesting, right? This end is interesting. Let's move on.
Played a guy, five kings pre-flop. For the three bet, cuz he was nervous. People play terribly.
Oh.
For sure, for sure.
Uh, you called this.
You, come on.
No, 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 I think you gotta call this. Unless, unless that guy's like super nitty, unless he's super nitty.
I disagree with the call here. I think it's a fold.
I'm never calling that.
Yo, I'm sorry, was that eight, nine, or was that pocket nines?
Eight, nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Are we both?
I, I, I saw pocket nine.
I was gonna say, the guy with the eighty, the eighty percent fold, the three bets calling that, come on.
You gotta dance here.
It's all the same thing, you know?
You call this, though.
You gotta dance here. And lose.
Oh, no. GG. GG run out.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Like this.
A little bit deep, is it now?
Yeah, yeah.
I think at PKO, it's different, is.
Everyone's even, man. There's no.
Yeah, I mean, he's only covered in like one spot, so maybe it's not that much different.
We've seen him three bet ten jack and hands like that with this step.
Wow. There you go.
Guy's about to be deceived.
You tree bet, he gets away.
Yeah, but you still got a three bet there.
I, 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 I think I would tree bet as well.
You can't result it.
With thirty-something bigs, like, I might not.
Check raise or you just call here?
Bottom two. In a multi-way pot, I think I do some calling here, but I don't know. I, I haven't looked at these a whole bunch. The bottom two multi-way out of position to one.
And I think with clubs, you can call too.
It may be good, it may be bad, I don't know.
Pretty coordinated, so.
If you don't check raise, then you can't get in on the king ten. Uh, we can still play like, uh, queen seven suited, like, top, bottom.
Hmm, this is not great.
Not great, right? With forty-five effective, forty-four.
Yeah, just, I, I, I. Yeah, you, you shouldn't be doing this very much. You're just isolating yourself against better hands when he continues.
Yeah, I don't mind like a non-all-in tree bet to seven.
Yeah, no, 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 that's the play, I think. I think that's the play.
Just get in against the first guy and then like, you know, hope the other guy folds.
Um.
That's my approach.
Okay, if it folds back to you, I think I call.
Do you?
I think I do.
Looks like this is the, the M M N different, seven, I think we have to call, six, it's close.
It just depends on the bounty, honestly. Like, this is a big part.
A pair knit, too long in my life, do.
It just depends on the bounty.
Yeah, he shows up with a ace tens, it's kind of whatever. You gotta win your flips.
Oh, wait, what? You re-bought?
No. We survived.
Take that, ace A. Um, I'm probably gonna jam this.
I think so, right?
I think we re-bought.
I'm probably gonna jam this.
Yep.
Oh, look at this.
Um, this is kind of not fun. I, I lose tournaments on hands like this.
You just call, right?
Yeah, I know. That's why, that's why I lose tournaments on hands like this.
Yeah. ICM may be a fold. Think we're getting.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, man, like, I'm, I'm, I, if like, if I'm deep in a tournament, I might just let it go. Cuz now like, what do you do? Like, you're in trouble.
Best again.
Did you block that?
Block the river.
I feel like we're gonna, gotta, we, we're gonna, you gotta call our way into a, uh.
And get.
A lost pot. Okay, well, see, there you go.
It's one big blind.
Okay.
Uh, hmm.
One thirty-two, so last fifty ends. We could be approaching the final table.
Nice jam, I guess.
Could be the final table.
It could be.
Well, we didn't see much really shorthanded play yet, did we?
GG rolls back and gives you chips for the final table.
Watch for the rollback. Is this a good jam? It's very similar to the other one, right?
Why not?
With the ten.
Yeah. Oh, the dream.
This is a call, huh? Ooh, the turn, the return. Oh, so now we go from forty big blinds to forty big blinds, all right?
This is the.
I think this is the final table. That jack situation was final two tables, I think.
Yeah, I think so, right?
So it started with like eight people?
You guys betting here?
Yeah.
I don't bet monotone in that position.
Is this on GG?
It is.
It is on GG.
So, shouldn't it be nine people?
No, I think maybe two people got eliminated on the last round.
So, we're down the first.
There was a double knockout.
I have the answer, guys. The first hand at the final table, if it's eight-handed, is gonna be nine, five. Uh, the first hand we VPip is gonna be queen seven O. In the small block.
It kind of feels like we missed a bunch of hands, so, like. Weirdly.
Oh, we're, we are filtering by VPip.
Yeah, it'll be queen seven O. Uh, it's the first hand, when we're down to eight, that's the first.
We're not at the final table yet.
Oh, look at.
Okay, that's still deep ICM.
Oh.
Uh, this is, this is, this is pretty good.
Oh, this.
Pretty bo- pretty brave.
Very sweet.
That's very nice, I think. Um, suited, off-suited is great as well, but suited is fine.
What kind of bet?
Uh, not a big fan of this size personally.
Yeah, this is like, uh. Terrible, right?
Um. Exploitative, it may not be super bad, but like, I don't think you're supposed to bet that, so I think.
It's like, you know, on GG, you're out of position.
People just.
Continuing your range is just static, like, you're just wasting chips, like, he's gonna fold the same range if you bet like one point two.
Yeah, I don't. Out of position. Blowing the pot.
Oh.
Just a call?
I would just call the queen ten, I think.
Just a call here, right?
Queen ten is coming, just call.
It's not raising.
Hmm, I think I would play call.
SPR too small, we just call.
Check raise.
You're probably right, Louis.
You raising, Jeremy, here?
Check raise, yeah. Top two.
It's raising a lot, it's mostly raising.
Yeah, top two, you just gotta raise on the, especially with the flush draw.
All in?
Too much equity.
Oh.
Not all in, but, you know.
Alright, goodbye.
Woo, you have the flush draw.
Of the nine of hearts came.
The blind, the blind's fifty, a hundred thousand? Looks like we're a good bit away from the final table still.
They can come back.
Maybe. Position, yeah. Seven, one, two.
Oh, wait, what? He fold?
Pocket seven.
What do you wanna do here? You're calling up side pain?
Depends on the bounty, I'd probably just call off, but it really depends on the guy's stats and the bounty. I think this is like, if he has like a decent bounty, you gotta call off, because he's shoving all the under pairs, he's shoving like some jacked into the king jack suited, some stuff, like, we only are dominated by like, you know, like, ace screen, ace king. Like, I think, like, he has enough, like, ace ten suited, we have to call off. We have so many chips. Like, if he has like any, any sort of like a real bounty, then just call off, if he has min bounty, I just like, ah, spite fold, I guess, save the chips for.
I think I'm the same, right?
Yeah. Nice.
Um.
Is it better to just call here?
No, 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 probably not, I, we're out of position, uh, he, if he's doing, he he's like kind of polarized there, right?
Yeah.
So like, if he's kind of polarized, then like, um, we we don't really wanna give, like, this is late in tournament, I wouldn't wanna take the risk, see an ace high board, maybe he has like some ace, ace juice kind of, kind of stuff, kind of junk. Uh, you know, and.
What about this one here?
He basically did the, the best move. Yeah, just jam it, jam it. Nice, BP. Oh, what? Okay.
So it's close, is this a call or a fold?
Uh, for the bounty, and they're probably getting sizable now, you gotta go for it, right?
Go for it.
Seems pretty, I think I would go for probably anyway. Ace ten, ace nine maybe folds, ace ten, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I think this rule depends on the size of the bounty.
Yep. And and the guy's stats as well, right? Like, if it's a, this guy, just call it off. Looks like some soup.
I still think people jam aces too wide there, all in, so ace ten's pretty good.
Like, all the suited aces are jamming, like, or are supposed to jam at some frequency, so like, oh, when you have a send, you dominate all this. Plus you flip against all the pairs, so, I think.
Is this a call off?
Uh, yeah, well, it's like, six, six blinds.
Six, yeah. Late position.
Yeah, I think we have to call like almost in it too. Here that we opened, right, for six blinds. Almost, almost, maybe like the absolute worst shit that we open. We can maybe save it. Ooh. Wow, ICM pressure.
Yeah, I don't like the king queen off.
I don't hate it.
Hmm.
Ouch.
Ouch, wow.
Oh?
Let's go.
Oh?
Uh, oh wait, it's he opened, right, okay, maybe. Yeah, this one, wait, he has like nineteen chips, right?
Uh, it's ten big blinds, you open two, he shoves eleven, so it's like eight or nine, you gotta.
Man, you have to call, right? Like, what, like, like? That kind of is like.
It's close, I don't know.
It really does, I I don't know, I'm, I can't comment.
Getting so deep into it, remember I?
Like, the guy has a huge bounty, like, madam, I could correct the call, even with ICM, and two drinking.
Okay, so, I'm not gonna get an open, we flat call. We get this board, we check, check. Bet three call.
Don't we bet after he checks on that board?
A fair amount, we're pretty high up in range, though, might have like worse suited aces we wanna start betting. But this, I'm sure it has to bet.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, this probably does check some because it's high up.
It's definitely gonna bet some, right, but not like, probably less than half.
Uh, I think they're like ace juice of clubs, it has some check backs, right, but ace jack is so much equity.
Well, it's obviously betting sixty percent on the flop.
Yeah, that's a little more than I thought.
Majority back on the flop.
Majority, but yeah, like ace juice clubs, I can see a lot of checking. Something like ace jackets, it's like, you you're not afraid of anything, like, he check raises, you're like, great, let's get it in. But ace juice, you're like, ah, man, like, kind of, don't really wanna get it in that fast.
Yeah, you don't mind folding ace two though either, right, so it makes a bluff.
Uh, with the flush draw?
Oh, yeah, the flush, oh, yeah, no, right.
It's just the final table now.
No, the the final table bubble's gonna be queen, queen.
But we're nine-handed.
Yeah, no, this is a jam.
Wait, what?
Uh, that's not an open.
This could be eighteen, guys.
Final table, small pairs, don't, don't open for middle.
If this is the final table, then.
Yeah, this is a fold.
Very wild open. Yeah, it's a fold.
Too wide, right?
Yeah, we shouldn't open that.
Well, it depends on the blinds.
Like, I don't know if this is still the final table or not.
This is also.
This is the FT from what I.
Uh, yeah, I thought you guys said eight, the final table was eight.
No, no.
Is this a jam? Or just a call?
Eight.
I, uh.
You got a pot-sized bet left.
I'm a raise here, always, in my mind.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, is this nine or eight?
Nine.
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 I don't have anything nine-handed in this, in the hand history you sent me.
Uh. I mean, the only way you can be on, uh, like, nine-handed on GG's on the FT, so that should be FT, has to be, right?
Yeah.
I would raise here, but it wouldn't matter, because the guy is just pure air balling.
Yeah, you have, you have SPR one, just get him in.
Oh, here's nine, finally.
All in? Or just a lip?
Ace three.
I think you could do both.
All in. Bounty, bounty.
If villain is calling off correctly, I don't mind it, or folding correctly.
Call.
Yeah, this is a call, right?
Yes, we're covered, final table, ICM pressure, just call.
Yeah, that's all, not folding, not raising, yeah. Wow, okay.
You guys like to call there or tree bet?
I always call.
I would, I would three bet ace nine suited.
I'm not three betting a big stack, he could four bet and we gotta fold.
We, we, yeah, we, yeah, precisely, took the worst out of him, well. And and all hand is just played so good as a call, like.
I don't know if we call there or raise.
I mean, an FT.
We're in position.
That much of a raising, right, but like, just against a big stack PKO, I'm pretty sure we still have to call some, some like hands, if not, he can just jam and jam on it with all his ace six suited, all his like broad raise, and we can't do anything, because it's short stacks, because ICM.
He's given us a great price, can't fold, yeah, so. Uh, he's gonna have a jack or a nine here a lot, yeah. The way his bet, way his bet sizes were. People are so face up.
Okay.
Wow, that's a.
Uh, he checks, I would bet, uh, uh, we opened, he's big blind.
I bet really.
Yeah, I'm still betting.
Just bet like, one, one point two.
I think I might check.
You just get all this junk to fall, you 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 deny equity, we have a pair that's gonna be ahead, it's hard to hit a pair on the flop, he's gonna have draws, whatever, they're gonna continue, but you just get, you clean up your equity, I I bet there.
Yeah, final table.
Yeah, you're probably right, yep.
Yeah, because, like, if you check, there's almost no, like, good turn cards, other than, other than the one that dropped, right? Like, any five, six, seven, eight, it's an overcard, it's probably really bad for our hand, uh, you know, and everything else is like.
High cards are good for our range, diamonds are gonna be good.
I mean, like, there's a bunch of cards that we don't wanna see, so, if you can clear out, it's absolute trash.
Yeah, for sure.
You just clear out with a small bet, he's not gonna check, get check raised a lot on his board, without holding.
He, I think he had to bet the turn now.
Oh, he checked the turn, what the? Come on, man, you have the nuts, I guess I'm value.
And he got the guy with all the chips in, in the pot with you, you wanna get some, I think.
What about this one? Feels like a fold?
Uh, I mean, there's only one stack shorter than us, I think I'm calling, man.
Hold this, we cannot call this.
Ace jack, oh, I fold, ace jack suited, I'm in there.
Yeah.
This is a shorter, right?
It's suicide.
Like, this is a ten, ten K runner, um, final table, right, like, the page jumps are gonna be pretty big.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
I don't wanna call my life for ace jack suited on a, when a page jump could be like a grand or eight hundred or something.
I gotta run that one now.
Uh, you think it's worth running, Ken?
I gotta, I, you know what? So the problem is, for some reason, like, what I have, my P two four from all the sites I play on, um, I get the bounties, but I didn't get the bounties with the hand history you sent me, so.
Okay.
It's a, it's a little annoying, but I could just run it like a chip BB.
Yeah, please, because I don't think bounties matter. At this, like, final table, kinda does, but.
Well, we recovered, so it doesn't really matter that much for us.
Dollar bounty, and, oh, yeah, that's true.
We recovered, right, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not that big of a deal.
That's true.
Um. Where the fuck is this hand at? We, now, we're not nine-handed, how many handed are we here?
Six.
Six.
Did we get queens yet, at this table?
No.
Yeah, we did, we had it like under the gun, we opened him, we got like.
He paid, yeah, okay, so, we're six-handed, let's look up here. Ace jack suited, okay, we're cut off with a check suited?
Uh, yeah.
So.
But I don't know, open small blind shelves, pretty much.
Wanna share a screen, Ken?
So, well, hold on, let me see what you got, I wanna make sure I set it up right, we open two X, I guess?
Yes. Button calls, small blind check.
Back. Uh. ICM. I'm just gonna make it, take turn to PKO off. I gotta change the payout structure. Will do. And this is a big field, so, what do I got that's a big field? Five hundred eighty-five paid. We'll use this ACR. Uh. Little chips, nine, seven, five. Lot to set up when you do it manually, eight, nine, seven, five. Five, two, zero. My eyes aren't good.
I found, I found a sim that's kind of like it. On GG with you, and, uh, and share it.
Okay, this looks good, we open two X, that looks all good. Finish. Cancel this. Let's see.
Run.
Oh, we open.
Cut off.
Did button fold, cut off, open, button fold, small blind jams?
Button calls.
Button. Calls.
Oh, wait, this is, uh.
Yeah, this is not it.
Wrong screenshot.
Small blind jam.
What am I doing?
Uh, yeah, it's gonna fold a lot, wait.
I've raised button call, small blind jams.
What's wrong here?
Cut off.
Cut off open, button call. Uh, that's big blind.
I'm doing this.
Small blind jams. Call.
There you go.
It's mixing ace jack suited. So, good fold.
Well, mixing.
Yeah, it's a good fold, and it's just starting to run, it's gonna probably go out, it's losing chip, it's calling, it loses chips when it calls, you wanna say?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, if anybody asked.
Jeremy put a PKO range in, um. Chat.
Yeah, it's a minus three-three.
It's not happy with ace jack, right?
No, I'm very unhappy.
Alright.
Not happy, it's not happy with ace queen.
Yeah, even ace queen is mixing, ace queen suited.
Ooh, okay, 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 so we're like a little bit far off, alright.
And this is not even a big.
Wait, ace queen suited, even, wow.
Yeah.
Just the chip configuration, eh?
It's got a long way to go, but I thought, where's one of the, where's the short stack, well, there's one shorter stack, so we'd be okay.
This tree, I think there's one, two, three.
Well, we're essentially tied for four bet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're risking our lives by doubling up, but we gain a lot from surviving, because like, any of them could bust, right? Like, we, we don't wanna like, it's not like if we flip here, we have a huge chance of getting first.
Yeah.
But if we just like kind of slather, right? So ace jack suited, calling all in.
Let me see, the small blinds jamming range here.
Oh, he's jamming pretty.
Pretty wide, holy crap.
Imagine pretty wide, yeah, and that's the thing about ICM, right, like.
Well, with the ICM pressure, he can jam, what, s- sixty percent?
No, he's jamming, he's jamming eight percent, but he's got suited nines, ace nine, king nine, queen nine, jack nine, ten nines.
That's seems tight.
Uh, I think he tree bets, the sim I'm looking at, he tree bet seven percent, and he all in, uh, seven point two percent, so total, like, kind of like, uh, fourteen percent of like, tree bet or more, right? If that's like four percent.
Yeah, I got.
Which is quite a lot, which is quite a lot for a final table, I I would, I would imagine.
Yeah, I got him three betting thirteen percent, eight, eight, all in, like, four.
Yeah, pretty much paying like, BP about twenty, eighteen percent. Yeah, I, it just because it covers, right? The risk premium, it's a little high, much higher for us.
Yeah, I, it's sixteen, that's, I wasn't that far off in the way, though. Total range.
Yeah, I think I'll just go like, checks plus.
This is a call off, right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, pretend big blinds, I think it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think. Yep, nice call. Dominate, there you go.
What's this?
Oh, this is a good, this is a very good.
Oh, he's gotta fold it.
Yeah.
He does the half, the, the six point three, so that if it goes like all in, all in, all in, he can fold. But it's an effective all in. He's never folding to.
Yeah, I tried to do this kind of crap in HRC that absolutely hates it.
Yeah.
Doesn't do it.
Really?
I don't do that.
Refuse, HRC refuses to do that.
If I don't, if I don't wanna shove, I just min raise.
By min raise, you, you allow the big blind to kind of just, uh, complete and actualize, but like, if you do it this way, then you, you basically just all in, but if in the, like, the rare case that like, one guy shoves, another guy calls, you have free ladder, then you have the opportunity to fold, or rather, you should, you should fold. Yeah, and he's.
So do you ever do that with top of range? Do you ever put in half your stack in with aces and kings?
I mean, if, if you wanna shove, then like, why, like putting in sixes essentially sh- shoving, right? You, you're not folding on any flop or any like, uh, action other than all in call. Or like all in, all in call, and he's just like ladder second, hopefully. I mean, that's the theory anyway. But yeah, I think he, he did it intentionally, so.
Oh, he did it for sure intentionally. I see a lot of people do it. I just don't, I, I, I kind of understand it, but I'm kind of starting out to like it a ton.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like that myself personally.
It just, it works once in a blue moon, you know, like in ninety-nine percent of times, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, all, basically, yeah. But hey, tree-handed. I think this is a, this is a shove, man.
And then he just runs it to ace nine.
Oh, well.
And that's the end of it. Third game? Yeah, third place, four, four thousand bucks. Happy days. Pretty nice for a ten dollar game.
Wow, four hundred bounties.
Yeah.
Incredible.
Alright, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.